Good afternoon. It's the Committee of the Whole Meeting, Thursday, July 21st. It's 3:30 and we're in the council chambers here in the municipality of Yarmouth. I'd like to call the order to, like to call the meeting to order. And before we begin, I've got a letter of thanks here from Julia Gates. And it reads as follows, I'll read it out loud. It's very good and I know, all know, we take great joy and pleasure in our bursary program every year. So she did take the time to write us, which was nice. Dear Modi Leaders of Tomorrow Bursary Donor, I am honored to have been selected as the recipient of the Modi Leaders of Tomorrow Bursary. Thanks to your generosity, I can now pursue my passion for psychology by taking a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology at the University of Prince of Rhode Island. As I complete my undergraduate degree, I will continue to be grateful for the help you have given me. Thank you for enabling me to get the education I need to help others in successful ways. I truly appreciate the assistance and will be forever thankful. Sincerely, Julia Gates. So I thought that was lovely. So thank you, Julianne. Thank you, council. Also, just some commentary, I guess, about the meeting this afternoon and going on in the evening. We have Committee of the Whole followed by regular council. It is a fairly lengthy agenda, so if folks could, I think we should be as brief as possible, but get all the business done. And also, I'd like to recommend that when the motion's made to approve the agenda, that we table item 11.4 and we table item 11.6 until the August meeting. 11.4 is the Leaders of Tomorrow Bursary. Warden Cunningham, who's not able to be here this evening because of an urgent personal matter, he's asked me to chair. And also, thought he should be here as well for 11.7, the Lake George Watershed Committee Conversation. So he was pretty instrumental in that item, so my recommendation is to table that until the August meeting. So, item two, land acknowledgement. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are on the traditional lands of the Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item three, additions, deletions to the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item four, approval of agenda. Counselor Hilton, seconded by Counselor Durkey. And I'm assuming that the mover and seconder are okay with the amended agenda with the 11.4 and 11.7? Okay. So we've got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, council. Item five, declarations of any conflict of interest. There being none, I'll look in item six for a motion to extend the meeting to complete the agenda. Moved by Counselor Cushing. Seconded by Counselor Holbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make note that I have to leave at 6 o'clock for a previous engagement, so I can make them, I can second the motion to extend the meeting, but I probably won't be here past 6 o'clock anyway. So I just want to let everyone know that I have to leave at 6, so thank you.
Okay, that's fine. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to finish up by that time, so, with any luck. Thank you. So we'll move right into the presentations, which item?
Mr. Chair, can you call for the question?
Oh, I did not. Okay, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. My apologies, I got ahead of myself. Item seven, presentations. 7.1, Yarmouth County Historical Society, Ms. Mary Eldridge.
For those who I haven't met, I'm Mary Eldridge, and I've been the treasurer of the Yarmouth County Museum for almost 32 years. 32 years ago, there was one building and a budget of $50,000 and one employee. I co-chaired the, this is supposed to tell you our financial position, so that's why I'm talking about this. I co-chaired the $2.4 million expansion at the turn of the century, at which time we had to build an endowment to operate our new facility. We now have a $350,000 budget, two houses and an expanded church. $72,000 of our budget is for taxes. 32 years ago, we didn't pay taxes. Our financial situation is stable, but there are things we would like to be able to do and we can't. We work hard each year to break even. We keep trying to build our endowment, as without income from that and without local grants from the government, we would not be able to operate our museum and archives. In looking at our budget, you can see how much our board and staff are able to generate. Memberships, admissions, gift shop sales, fundraising, we generate about 20% of our budget. We have steadily withdrawn 5% from our endowment each year, and that 5% is the total of the market value in December 31st each year. And it includes income plus capital. On good years, the capital gains on the securities help cover the 5%. The securities generate about 3% in income and the rest is capital. But our investments have been well managed and 5% is doable. But I'm sure you know, we can't take much more than that or our endowments will be in jeopardy. We have three full-time employees. We definitely need two or three more. Our director, Nadine, does two jobs, the director and the curator. A few years ago, we set up a foundation to support the museum using bequests we had received over many years. From the investments in the foundation, we also withdraw a little over 5% each year. This year, we have to raise an extra $60,000 to help pay for a new window in the church building. Expenses like this have to come from capital in the endowment, which puts us back the following year. The town taxes us on our properties. The taxes have been $90,000 each year, but last year we were able to lower our assessment and now the taxes are around 70,000 category. The town gives us a grant to help with the taxes, but that keeps decreasing. In some years, we're paying over $10,000 for our taxes. When I started in the museum, as I mentioned before, we were exempt. But 10 or 12 years ago, the town council decided to do away with the exemption category. So we haven't been able to change that. We are the Yarmouth County Museum and Archives, and although the town levies the taxes and gives us a grant of approximately 87%, 88%, we hope that because we preserve town and county local history, you might consider helping with us with the balance of our taxes. If you're not comfortable with doing that, maybe you could give us a grant, help us with our $60,000 window. We are working very hard to raise as much as we can to cover the window. Now, I each passed out a statement to each of you and I put a little mark about the couple of things I'm going to mention. The donations of 6,400 so far this year, 5,000 is that is a local donor and it's for a student, so it doesn't help us with our operations. And the municipal grant of $43,729 is the grant to cover the first half of our taxes from the town. And of course, the wage subsidy, that's, we did receive some this year, but that's the end of that. And down under subtotal, the Fishpoint Project, 2817, they raised their own money and they spend the money to upgrade the Fishpoint property. They don't use any museum operating money for them. And then the capital of $12,368, that's what we've been able to raise this year so far for our window. And down under the expenses, of course, everybody knows that fuel has gone out of reach. And here's the taxes of the $43,000 that we paid and down below, the Fishpoint Project and the capital expenditures, the $20,000 of that is a down payment for the window. Now, you'll see a deficit balance, which doesn't look very healthy, but the government through the Nova Scotia Museum sends us a grant each year of $51,000 and it usually comes in May, but it hasn't come yet, so we're just hanging in there. And we haven't received any money for our three students on work grants yet so far this year. Above, I do have $2,300, but that was last year's student grant that came in late. And the government doesn't hurry too much in giving us grants for our students, but it comes through eventually. And on the right-hand side of the statement, the Pelton Fuller House takes care of itself. It was endowed with it when we received the house and the reason, the budget shows a $92,000 deficit because they have to paint the house this year. So that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Ms. Eldridge, I have a question. The window project, the $60,000 project, is, are you talking about the church portion of the facility?
Yeah.
That needs, that needs to be?
Yeah. We did the one on the street side a couple of years ago, five years ago, and it turned out to be 45,000, 50,000. And of course, everything's gone up now and we have to do the one on the side. And it's all rotting, all the sills and everything are rotting, so it really has to be done.
Has to be done, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks so much, Mary, for this information. Just a couple of questions. In terms of the endowment, you're taking 5% of the endowment, so the actual money in the bank is a considerable amount if you only have to take 5%. Is that correct?
Well, no, the bank has a bank balance. We try to keep it 60,000, 70,000, 80,000 because of these things that come up. But we transfer the money, try to do it quarterly and/or when we need it from the endowment. So you'll see on here, just under the wage subsidy grant from the society foundation, we took $50,000 of that just recently because our bank balance is getting down and we still have another $50,000 budgeted, a little more than that for this year. And that will probably take that in the fall. We leave it in as long as we can. And right now, I don't want to cash anything too fast. Won't get much for it.
You're not getting, you're not getting much for it right now, anyway.
I know. Trying to hang in there until fall.
Okay. And I just want to tell you, I do understand about the getting funds from the student organizations, you have to hound them. That's what I found.
I know, it comes eventually.
I know, but you hire students and you want to pay them when you get them and you have to use your own money first until you get money from YCW or CSJ. But I found if you hound them, you get it faster.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, the wage subsidy did help our bank balance.
Yes.
And we've been able to use that to help us quite a bit because we were closed for a while last year.
Oh, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkey. Additional questions? Counselor Holbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mary, for coming in and presenting to us. So I just pulled up the grants to organizations that we distributed this budget year and you, I'm seeing that the Yarmouth, let me find it again, Historical Society did put in an application and we did provide $2,500, obviously not quite as much as you were anticipating. And that's of the $54,000 that we distributed, you know, throughout, you know, throughout Yarmouth County, so.
Yeah.
So if, we don't ever decide anything here in council, but we could, you know, move things forward, so other than the window, is there anything else? Like if we were to, you know, have a conversation at a later time? Is there something else that we could help with that, you know, I'm not saying we would, but you know, is there anything else that?
Right, right now, our window's the biggest thing.
It's the biggest thing.
Yeah, it's the biggest thing. We can't hire any more employees until we have enough money generated in the endowment to pay them. And like even though we've got $129,000, we need that to operate.
Right.
And so, you know, the board really wants to spend more money, but not there.
Right.
And I'm going to have to be replaced one of these day twos. They're not cheap bookkeepers. I'm sure I won't be here another 30 years.
So are there any provincial grants, you know, for restoration? I'm just, you know?
We, they wanted, Nadine and the board wanted to get a subscription from one of these foundations that, you know, they, $2,000 a year. And I wasn't in favor of it, but I, who am I, you know? And so they go through these, this book and they look for organizations that would help with this type of thing.
Right.
And we did get a $2,500 grant, which at least pays for the subscription, but of course, it goes for the window. And they are, they've tried, they've asked a few other foundations to see if they can get some grants for the window. And it's, it's a big, it's a big expense. And we, the roofs are done, thank goodness, we've got all the roofs done. We did have a capital budget, but that all went on the roofs.
Right. No, and it's an important, you know, part of our, you know, town and county to have, you know, the museum. And it is a big, you know, a big location. There's lots of buildings, so.
It's too bad that we aren't still exempt. And, you know, we, on the library board, it was the same thing, but we were able to get that exempt, but we haven't been able to get the museum exempted. It's not quite under the right umbrella, I guess.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Eldridge, for coming in and taking the time and council review the financial document you've explained to us. And we understand the window is a big issue and hopefully we will, we'll be able to maybe look at that more closely in the future.
Thank you very much. If I haven't used my 20 minutes, can I have two minutes?
Certainly.
And another hat?
Yeah.
Every year, I send you a newsletter of the Yarmouth Area Community Fund, and I want you to know that the town and you and our guy gave us our first grants. We don't ask for any money. The reason the Yarmouth Area Community Fund was formed in 2008 was to supplement you and the town who give grants that are getting lower and lower and lower. And now we have at least $20,000 a year that we can supplement and our grants all go to charitable organizations or the municipalities that are helping those in need.
That's wonderful.
So that's what it's about. So when you get the newsletter each year, I was going to call and ask for a presentation, but two minutes is all I need. And you read my newsletters and go to my Facebook and you'll know what we're all about. But that's why we don't ask you for money, because we're trying to help you with your grants.
Absolutely.
So that's what that's all about. Thank you very much.
And we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay. And it's very nice to see you.
Okay, next up is Mr. Frank Grant, Director of Recreation.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Cunningham, and thanks, council, for having me in to chat with an update on the recreation department activities. Summer is going quite quickly and very challenging start to our summer, trying to get summer staff in place and lots of issues with getting enough applicants and trying to fill positions. So we've done what we could and we've got a great crew in place leading many different activities. And every year, we kick things off with Canada Day on July 1st and it was so good to have a normal July 1st summer kickoff this year. So just a few updates. I know that my report's been circulating, so I don't want to go word for word through it, but I did want to mention a big thanks to all of our summer, summer seasonal staff as well as our full-time staff. Jillian Camo, John Darcy and Tanya Bain have been so helpful with getting things in place without our community recreation coordinator position filled. We are welcoming a new staff person in that position on August 2nd. Mr. Matthew Smith is coming to join our team. So we've had to shuffle the decks and put different hats on and I commend all of our staff in helping do some not-so-normal things that they're used to in their everyday work in the last two months, getting ready for our busy summer. So the big part of our summer is, of course, our summer day camps. We have camps for kids ages four to 16 and that covers Summer Fund Day Camp, which is a camp for five, four to eight-year-olds, sports camp, nine to 12-year-olds, and Youth Outdoor Active Leadership Program, which is for 12 to 16-year-olds. And that youth camp, we haven't operated since COVID hit, so it has not been in operation for two summers. That program is training young, younger people, getting them some experience with our younger children, hoping that we're building them up for when they're a bit older, that they can apply for summer employment. So really happy that we got that program off the ground. I don't have a, I don't know why, I don't have a stats report on that, but we have five to 10 youth each week in that program where they do some in-house training and then they do some on-the-ground training at camps, delivering programs and activities all day from 9 until 4 p.m. We were very successful with Canada Summer Jobs this year with funding. 19 summer students were funded at half of minimum wage. So some of those positions are more than a minimum wage, hourly wage, but very, very happy with that complement. It should be right around $35,000 in funding to help us with all of our staff that we have going. Also, with Canada Day, we received $11,200 to help us celebrate Canada. And because one of the big expenses for Canada Day is the big fireworks show, we did have two cancellations for Canada Day fireworks, but we were able to shoot them off the third time. Third time's a charm. And Yarmouth Seafest hopped in and gave us $2,000 to help us keep the show at our budgeted amount that we had planned. So big thanks to Seafest for helping us out there with some of the cancellations and the general community, I guess, for being patient with us and trying to read weather charts and fog and all that stuff. Our seasonal staff are very busy with our outdoor recreation facilities, a very full complement this year that we haven't seen in the last couple of years with COVID. We've seen some action, but not to the extent of normalcy. So 20-team co-ed slow pitch league. So that is league play that's happening pretty much every night of the week, Monday to Friday. All of our slow pitch diamonds are under use and busy. And then when we roll around on Saturdays and Sundays, we have various co-ed slow pitch tournaments. So our diamonds are busy and people are getting back into some normalcy. With minor baseball and minor soccer, full complements of house and rep teams going. So again, house leagues more dominant during the week, rep teams in most divisions playing every weekend and of course, reciprocating with teams traveling to Yarmouth. Local recreational baseball league has six teams and they're using their baseball diamonds. And dragon boating is back. We have free dragon boating on Monday and Tuesdays throughout the summer. Show up at the dock, we get you geared up and in the boat at 6 o'clock. If you come at 6:10, just hang on the dock, they'll do a wet buy and pick you up. Canoe and kayak rentals, we always have rentals available for very reasonable rates, $10 per hour or $25 for three hours rentals. And those are going well. The weather has been good. We have had some days with high winds, which we are not able to put boats in the water, but summer is progressing. And of course, at Milo, we have lifeguards daily throughout the summer from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And we do regular testing of the lake to make sure that all of the E. coli levels are okay and so far, so good with testing results. Recreation strategic plan, I just wanted to say, yes, I know this has been a longstanding item on our, on our agenda, but we do have a consultant, Max Chauvin, that maybe some of you recognize Max's name from the great assistance that he lended towards the Mariner Center Board. We're working with Max to work on our recreation strategic plan as well as our physical activity plan. So shooting for a fall kickoff to our revamp of our department and our physical activity strategy. We have various special events that have taken place and are upcoming, a couple key ones. Every Tuesday night, we have Active Souls Walking Program. It's a, it's every Tuesday at 5:30 at various locations, mostly trails and sidewalk areas. Switch Open Street, we're closing down Main Street this Sunday from 12 to 4:00 and we have about 35 vendors set up along the street to make a big street party. And Walk Through Summer Walking and Tracking Program continues on. We have a number of people that are just walking on their own time and we're assisting them with some motivation to be out there and physically active by keeping track of their, of their steps and then reporting them and creating that bit of social to encourage them along. I did put a copy of our budget of where we were as of last week, July 13th. We're tracking very well as far as our program revenues and expenses. If there's any questions there, we can entertain those at the end. And just a few updates on our, on our project list. We are planning to continue work on the Hebron Recreation Complex road. Some engineering is taking place. We are looking at some renovations to the Rotary Center with washroom repairs, door repairs, and we are doing an accessibility, the municipality is doing an accessibility audit. They will be onsite August 3rd and 4th and we just thought that we would wait for the audit to take place before we did our renovations to make sure that we were covering all of our bases on that. Outdoor lighting and signage, we do have some signage issues at the Hebron Recreation Complex and we're looking at putting some lighting in some key spots. We do have vandalism that happens regularly around the trail and in some of the corners of the complex, so we're looking to address those. The Janet Smith Clubhouse Building over here at the soccer field is going to be having a heat pump installation take place. And we're also planning to extend our Fort Shu River Trail that encircles the Hebron Record Complex to the Yarmouth County Rail Trail. So a couple years ago, we did a water line replacement and when the water line to the Rotary Center was replaced, there was some clearing done down in the corner and it just seemed logical now that we've, we've got a bit of a clearing that we restore part of an old trail system that was there from Maple Grove Education Center and make another connect so that people can create a new loop when they're walking and enjoying the trails. And the last project that we have is we're looking to put an outdoor shelter here at the Janet Smith Soccer Field. And that's pretty much my report. If there's any questions at all, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Questions from council? Counselor Cushing?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Frank, you and your staff are doing a really wonderful job. I go around and take a, take a view of different things where since I'm the recreation chairperson. And I must say, Canada Day was a big, big event and it was, it was, a large number of people came, which was good. And I got, I got banned from giving up too much stuff at one time, so.
And the cake, and we got to have two cakes at the, at Cape Frisbee next year because the cake went too fast.
Yeah, but we had a great time. There were lots of people there and it was, you guys are doing a good job and certainly pass on that information to your staff.
Thank you, I will.
Counselor Holbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Frank. I was at Cape Frisbee for Canada Day and it was great to see people out and about and it was, when you were listening to the people talking, you know, they were, it wasn't just Cape Frisbee that they were attending. They would say, I just come from the South End, you know, playground, or I was in town doing this. And so it was really, it was good to see people out and about. It was probably one of the first things that I've been at since we've kind of come out of the COVID, you know, bubble to, to see that many people out and about. And yes, we did run out of ice cream fairly quickly, but next year, maybe we'll have more. A couple of questions, and they are joint things that I think that you have, that we in the municipality have in partnership with. At Ellenwood, they, I see that they've installed the Mobi Mat. have in partnership with. At Allenwood, they, I see that they've installed the Mobi mat and it's not where I thought it was going to be installed. I, I guess my concern, and I know that it's not just recreation, it was, you know, it's a joint thing with the Department of Natural Resources, if that's the correct title they go by now. I was anticipating it was going to be at the day camp part. And so, my concern is that being at the part where campers go, how do, how does, how is the public going to know the mat is there? And how much difficulty is it for people who need to use the mat to get to the camper part when normally only camper people are allowed down there? Do you have any answers for that?
Not all of them, but I, I understand your frustration. We wanted the mat to be at the lifeguarded swimming area. But if you look at that area,
It's not.
It's, it's not, from the time you park, there's, there's lots of issues with the height of the parking lot to the grass. There's lots of issues with the grassy area leading down to the beach. So, the, you know, the only spot that would work there is the camper's beach, just because it, it is more level from the parking lot to the beach. What Natural Resources told us was that if anyone that has a mobility issue just stops at the, at the park entrance, then of course, they can go in through to the beach area. Are they communicating that? I'm not sure. I don't, I, you know, it, it's one of those things that I ask the questions and, you know, they, they, they installed the mat. And so, I guess the long and short of it, it's not in the best spot. Over time, maybe they could make some repairs to that middle beach section. Yeah, it's.
So, and, and I know it's not you, and I'm thinking maybe we, I, I would be willing to make a motion to reach out to Natural Resources to see if there is a way to maybe, something is better than nothing. However, I really think that it should be at the camp, at the day, the day part of the beach. And I'm, I'm willing to make the motion that we reach out to Natural Resources to have them investigate the feasibility of relocation to the day park. And I still have questions.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Horbert. And is, is there a second for the motion?
Yes.
Yes, second, Patty Durkey, discussion.
So, and, so I guess to a follow-up to that and, you know, and I know Frank is here and it really isn't, I know it's not Frank. I know your, our recreation is doing the best that we can, but I walk there regularly. And so, when I knew that it was being moved from Port Maitland, which wasn't viable because of the wonderful tides we have that we hang our hat on so wonderfully, but not when it comes to Mobi mats and Mobi chairs. So, when I knew that it was going down in what I had watched, and I think very, from the very get-go, the work that Department of Natural Resources did on the accessibility portion of the day camp was abysmal at best. I, once, once you park, there really is no way, if you have a wheelchair, to get from the place that is wheelchair accessible to the beach. And so, you know, I, I, I just feel frustrated that, yes, it's a little step. And I will, now that, you know, I know that Department of Natural Resources has said, you know, people can use the day camp. I will start promoting it, you know, to make sure people know that they just have to stop and that it is there. I guess I would have hoped that they had promoted it more than nothing, because it really was only when I was out in my kayak from the water and I went, what is that? And then I went up into the shore and I'm like, oh, well, there's the Mobi mat. So, anyway, that's my discussion on that. But I do have a question about the, oh, let's stop that.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go on the motion.
And then I'll finish the question.
Yeah, yeah. And you can do the, the follow-up question. Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, Frank. And thank you, Counselor Horbert, for bringing that up. I've had numerous discussions with D N R. in the last little while and I, and they're not going to be favorable about this, but I haven't been favorable about the results that we've been getting, because there have been complaints about accessibility at the provincial beach park as well. When we first talked about moving the Mobi mats from, from the provincial park to Allenwood, I guess, which we should never assume, that, but there was discussion about needing accessibility from the park, public parking lot to the beach. And, and that came also as a result of having my ninety-four, ninety-five-year-old mother-in-law come out to meet us for a party and she had a difficult time getting to one of the picnic tables. So, I think we had discussed with D N R. that the idea would be paved, make a paved walkway all the way down to the public beach. And then once at the public beach, they could put the Mobi mat right there and that didn't happen. So, I look forward to having a discussion with them or us writing a letter to make that request. We did work really hard to, to get those Mobi mats here and we want to make the, the best use of them and as easy, and make it as easy as possible for anybody who has physical disabilities to use them. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just as a refresher for council and some of the, our two new counselors weren't here when the Mobi mat project started, but so there were agreements around the Mobi mat projects. And we are in agreement with the Department of Natural Resources that we received funding to purchase the Mobi mat and the chair because D N R. didn't qualify, but that we were turning it over to them and relinquishing control and authority over the Mobi mats. So, you know, D N R. worked very collaboratively with the municipality when the Port Maitland location didn't work. And, excuse me, I know that the intention was to have the Mobi mats installed in, in the day park area where Counselor Horbert was referring. So, you know, I think as we approach Natural Resources, we need to remember what we agreed to. And it should impact kind of the tone of the conversation for sure. The other thing that's really important, where I really think municipal council can get some traction, is that the province is currently in the early stages of an engagement, looking for feedback on the Accessibility Act. And I think it's very timely to remind the province that some fairly significant standards have been set for public, prescribed public sector bodies with respect to accessibility. And here we are having a very specific example around accessibility, where the province has, has authority and control to be part of a solution. And I know Counselor Durkey didn't quite get there when she shared her comments, but the, the Department of Natural Resources staff that work with us definitely have the attitude of can do. But I think I'm given to understand that the entire department has a one million dollar repair and maintenance budget for the entire province for a year, for all of their parks and their facilities. So, you know, I just want to recommend to council that as we work with Natural Resources to try and find a better solution to the problem, that we remember what we agreed to do and that perhaps we look at leveraging the engagement around accessibility to, to make a, a bigger, better point.
Thank you. Counselor Horbert. Oh, you're good. Perhaps we could have some clarity around the, around the motion again. Not that it wasn't clear, but just if you could reread the motion.
Yeah.
No, pushing the wrong buttons.
Got it. Yep. So, I have it was moved by Counselor Sherri Horbert, seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey, to reach out to Natural Resources to have them investigate the feasibility of relocation of the Mobi mat to the other beach at Allenwood Park.
Okay, thank you. Additional conversation on the, the motion that's on the floor? Okay, there being none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Same vibe by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Yes. Counselor Horbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't mean to hijack your recreation department.
No, no, it's, it's good discussion, but you know, I, I'm, I'm sitting here just thinking to myself that here we are, two thousand twenty-two, we just adopted accessibility plan. We have till two thousand and thirty to put all those things into action. And most of our recreation facilities are not accessible. Most of our parking lots are gravel. Most of our entrances into fields are too narrow. So, I just want to let council know that there is a lot of work to do. We plan to tackle it bit by bit, but it would be, if the province had some magical funding pots that we could apply to, it would help tick some of those boxes off. But it's going to be a long process. Be patient with us and we're, we'll do what we can.
I have, I have a question. Do you have an update on the sport equity inclusion access person, net hire, they were going to hire a navigator? Do you know if that person has been hired?
I, I had sat in on the interviews. It is a sport Nova Scotia, Scotia position. So, they, after the interviews were done, they told me they would update me when someone accepted the offer. So, I, I don't have an update yet.
Okay.
But it should be coming soon.
Thanks. And thank you to your staff for everything that you're doing summer and the rest of the year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor question?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Frank, you made a good point. It is two thousand twenty-two, we get to two thousand thirty to make things accessible. And you certainly identified that most of our facilities, if not all of them, are not accessible friendly. Counselor Horbert, Counselor Durkey certainly pointed out with the accessibility mats and what they're like. So, I think it's not only our recreation department, but I think if we reach out to all the recreation departments across Nova Scotia and, and put pressure on the provo, province and say, listen, you're mandating that we have to have this done by two thousand thirty, how are we going to do it? We need funds in order to do it. So, I think it's, you know, I'm not sure if it's the right process here to do it. Shouldn't we reach out to all the recreation committees across Nova Scotia and, and they must be having the same type of problem, I would think, and, and really, really put the pressure to the province to, to come up with some funds to make this happen for us, not only for us, for us, across Nova Scotia. Is that the right way to do it?
Well, I, I, I'm thinking perhaps we could, we could have staff, and I'm looking to our C E O., work, work with perhaps Frank to, to get an idea of the cost. And, and then I agree with you, perhaps we could reach out to them, to them at that point, saying, you know, the, the bill, the, the capital, the capital requirement over the next eight years is going to be X number of dollars. This is going to create potentially some budgetary concerns for us. Obviously, money can't be spent in two places at once. And certainly if there's a, you know, legislative requirement to, to do this, and not that it's, it's important, obviously, work, but, you know, we, we can look into that and see, see what type of funding is there. And maybe that's the, maybe that's the way to go. And I'll look to our C E O. for comment on that.
So, the regulations for prescribed sector bodies are looking at the work to address accessibility in an incremental way. And so, right now, we're required to focus on the built environment, which we are, as, as you know, we're doing audits on our buildings now. Once those audits are complete and we do that work, then we roll out to the next level. And we're going to have to include, in addition to the types of assets that Frank referenced, we're going to have to look at our sidewalks. We're going to have to look at if we offer a transit service, how we offer that in terms of bus stops and getting on the buses. So, it's going to happen incrementally. So, I think it would be a little bit, a little bit premature to do any kind of research work right now on that piece, because we are required right now to focus on the built environment first.
Thank you. Everybody good on that item? How's that?
Okay.
You're, but okay? Not good, but okay. One rung down from good. Any additional questions for, for Frank today? Okay. Listen, on behalf of council, thank you very much and great report. And always enjoy hearing about recreation and always enjoy participating in, in recreation in there. It's, it's fantastic. So, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Have a great summer, what remains of it, certainly.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay, item eight, item eight point one. And there are a couple items here, eight point one-one and eight point one-two. Eight point one-one is for information, but Construction, Demolition, Debris Management Regulations. Mr. Gus Green has been kind enough to, to join us today. And he's going to give a little bit of, of additional information, provide some, some back, background to the letter that came from the, that came from the province under eight point one point one. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Deputy Warden and council. I appreciate a few minutes of your time this afternoon. Specifically, there's been a couple of changes that the province has made to construction demolition regulations. The two things that we've been made aware of so far at least are, that treated and creosote woods are no longer considered C and D material and will have to be disposed of in a second generation landfill. The second issue is around permitting of storage of C and D material. When C and I, C E O. and I, Brooks and I first spoke on this a couple of weeks ago, I indicated at that time that I didn't think that this was going to have any significant impact on our municipalities and specifically the municipality of Yarmouth. Since that time, I've had further discussions with Glennon Ring, the facility manager, and he's on the same page as me with this issue. Now, I know in speaking to some of my colleagues around the province, that's not necessarily going to be their experience with how this is going to impact them. But if you will indulge me for a minute, I'll explain why it's going to be, we hope, a different experience for us. So, most of the municipalities that operate C and D disposal sites do so, because for them, it's an extremely cheap way to dispose of C and D material. If you have clay, then all you have to do is dig a hole and put in a few monitoring wells and you have a C and D disposal site. That has not been our experience. And here, we don't have clay, we have fractured bedrock, which is why we have the only lined C and D disposal site in the province of Nova Scotia. We didn't do it because it was cheap. The municipalities in our area did it because it was a responsible, cost-effective local solution for a local problem and wouldn't unduly contribute to greenhouse gases by having to haul that material somewhere else. So, what's happened now is that the province has changed the regulation and treated wood is no longer C and D and has to go to a second generation landfill. Now, if someone comes into our facility with a load of just wood material, we offer them a lower rate that, because the material has potential to be recycled. So, that rate is, I think, fifty-eight dollars a metric ton. What this changes is that now if you come in with a load of wood, but you have treated wood in there, it can no longer be accepted. So, you would have to be charged the mixed C and D rate, which is one hundred and twenty-eight dollars a metric ton. Now, what would happen in this scenario, someone comes in with that load, instead of sending it to your C and D site, which you cannot do, they come across the scale and you charge them your mixed C and D rate of one hundred and twenty-eight dollars a ton, and you send them over to dump on the tipping floor, because this is regular garbage now, not C and D. So, it would be loaded with your regular garbage and shipped to the municipality of Queens. Now, because of contract, the rate you pay to the municipality of Queens to ship and receive this material is a hundred and seven dollars a ton. So, yeah, it's a little bit more handling, because now instead of them just dumping in the cell, now you have to pick it up off the floor and, and put it in the truck. But you are charging a twenty-dollar premium on that material over what it's costing you. So, it offsets your, your handling. So, this is really a, a net revenue situation for you. We don't see any potential increase in cost for, on this issue. In fact, potentially, there may be some savings, because you have a very expensive landfill cell. Any material that you send somewhere else prolongs the life of that cell and means it's going to be a longer period of time if we have to invest in building a new one. The other issue is there's going to be a lot less wood to grind to recycle. So, you're going to save money at the end of the year on the cost of grinding, which is typically around fifty thousand dollars. So, that's going to be less. So, there's no significant negative impact because of this change and there's potentially some small savings for you. The other change, the permitting around storage of C and D, this is something actually we've been asking for, for a long time. One of the common calls that our bylaw officer gets and other bylaw officers, I suspect, is that someone's knocked down a house and dumped it in the back forty. And you go investigate and sure enough, that looks like a house dumped in the back forty. And so, you go to that person, you say, you've dumped this material illegally. And they say, oh, no, I'm storing it. And now you're stuck. Environment will just look at you and say, gee, I guess that's a hazardous non-sightly problem for you. And we all know how easy those are to handle. So, this is actually something that we've been asking for and strangely, the province has agreed to it. So, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet, but we, we welcome that they're going to do something about that material. So, that in a nutshell is why we don't foresee this having any huge negative impacts. I know for a lot of municipalities, it's going to affect them financially and significantly. That's not going to be your experience, I don't believe.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Seems like pretty good news on ballot. Any, any questions from council? Yes, Madam C E O.
Thanks, thanks, Gus. And thank you, Mr. Chair. So, there is an element to the correspondence. that, as Gus shared, following our original conversation, there have been provincial conversations. And we don't, we do know for certain that there's going to be a negative financial impact to some municipalities because of these changes in regulations, which means that the memorandum of understanding with respect to 12 months notice was not respected. And so you are likely to hear through, through your networks, your municipal networks, you know, some work around addressing that with the province, the fact that, you know, there were, for some municipalities, you know, we're talking about something handy to a million dollars in the first year to comply with this, and then ongoing operating costs. So it is this, you know, the fact that the letter came out and Gus and I knew right out of the gate that it wasn't, you know, going to have a, a big impact on operations for our municipality. Across the province, there are going to be. So just want you to be aware that our experience is a bit of an anomaly. And so if you are chatting with your municipal colleagues, we wanted you to be briefed and kind of familiar with, with our own dynamic versus what quite likely a number of other municipalities are going to experience.
Thank you.
Counselor question?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Gus, great explanation on the, on the letter that, that was before us here. And again, chairperson of the solid waste park. It doesn't relate to this letter, but we have that rope issue. Has there been any talk about how we're going to handle that? Because that's a, that's a huge, huge problem that we have to, have to solve.
I believe there's been some action on at least a pilot project of sending some loads of rope for recycling. But I can't give you the specifics on it. Glennon could probably answer it for you.
Yeah.
But we would certainly something that we'll be raising with the province next week when we talk about C and D.
Yeah. And, and again, it's, it's not on the same subject that you talked about, but still involves a C and D and our solid waste being shipped out and whatnot. But I just wanted to make sure council knew that knows about the problem with the rope that we do have, and we have to do something. We have to get environment to make up their mind what they're going to do. So, thank you.
And Counselor question? Any additional questions?
Okay, I'm, I'm seeing none. So thank you very much, Mr. Green. It was, it was interesting and informed as always.
Always a pleasure.
We appreciate having you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And there was one other piece of correspondence, 8.1.2, Letter from Workers' Compensation Board of Nova Scotia. Any comment on that, just for information? Okay, we'll move on to 8.2 for action. 8.2.1, Office of the Auditor General Oversight and Management of Government-Owned Public Housing. And I will look to, I did read a bit of that, and it was quite lengthy, but lots of issues there. So I'll, I'll look to our C E O for some comments. And I understand there may be a, a, a motion required from council ultimately.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the report that was filed with council for your consideration, the first probably 15 pages or so give a really good summary of what the Office of the Auditor General did with respect to its review of government-owned public housing in Nova Scotia. Overall, you know, the findings are that the assets are underutilized, that there are challenges with the governance, and there are inconsistencies with respect to the application process and, and assigning housing units to applicants. But what I wanted to raise with council is, the municipality has a number of agreements with Housing Nova Scotia whereby we fund 12 and 1/2% of net operating loss on some of the properties that are referenced in this report. And, you know, we've been, we've been writing to Housing Nova Scotia and having conversations with Housing Nova Scotia to provide a better defense for the net operating loss that gets invoiced to the municipality every year. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of $45,000 a year for us. And so, you know, my recommendation to council is, is that council correspond with Minister Bane, Minister Bane, the Speaker of the House, and, and support the recommendations around governance and accountability. And as well, through the lens of the housing crisis in Nova Scotia, you know, when we hear about units that are not being used because the turnover time is long, or applications can't be vetted or processed, then, you know, we also want to speak to that because the net operating loss is also impacted by every month that a unit goes unrented. It reduces the revenue. So my recommendation would be that council write to Minister Bane and support the findings of the Office of the Auditor General and encourage government to take action.
Okay, we've got a mover and a nick. Do we have a seconder? Seconder, Counselor Durkey? Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Old Business, item nine, divert Nova Scotia report on littering. And we, we've talked about this at a previous council meeting at length. And I'll look to, to our C E O to, to highlight some of the things that, that we've actually done in, in light of our conversations and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, counsel, maybe kind of just to help, help you focus in on what the salient points are, the relevant points are with respect to this document. What divert Nova Scotia found was that there's really no silver bullet with respect to littering and illegal dumping. You know, a number of activities are going to be required. And the report discusses three, three approaches that, that the municipality of Yarmouth is actively involved in. So, you know, we, we offer support to community organizations to do litter cleanup. We are now in the process of implementing and the reverse onus clauses in our solid waste bylaw. Reverse onus clauses in our bylaw. And we fund Waste Check, and we do some of our own public education campaigns. So I just kind of want to help, help you focus in on, as you think about the work we're doing to try and address the littering and illegal dumping issue, that I think, I think we're on the right track. And the reverse onus piece is something that Gus and I have already talked about and we're working on implementing. And there'll be further details on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Victoria, are there additional? Oh. Counselor Hurlbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The report was from divert was quite lengthy, but I found it a very interesting read. And on page 19, it actually talked, there's a pictograph here about where people litter. And, you know, maybe, you know, when we're looking at our approaches through Waste Check, that, you know, for me, this was like, oh, yeah, are we doing everything we can to have waste receptacles at walking trails, at, you know, crowd spots, at, you know, where those things are? So I know that we are doing a lot already, but I think the public needs to know that, you know, it's an ongoing concerted effort with, you know, as C E O Brooks has, you know, mentioned with all of us. But this, page 19 for me was like, oh, we really, you know, we could look at that and see, can we do, are there some easy things that we could do in some of those locations to, you know, curb some of the littering? But the report in itself was, you know, a very interesting read for me. And it talked about, you know, people just being lazy and, you know, the crowd mentality. If someone sees somebody throwing something out the window, another person will throw it out the window. And if you see cigarette butts on the side of the road, you're going to put your cigarette butts on the side of the road. So, you know, for me, it was very good. But page 19 was, you know, the one, how can, you know, what can, what else can we do? What are the little things? What are the medium things and the big things that we can do in the future to kind of curb or kind of contain the litter? Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank Counsel Hurlbert. Counselor question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Counsel Hurlbert was mentioning about that page 19, Nova Scotia Report Where People Litter and whatnot, I go walking with my little dog on, on, on trails and, that are heavily used. And on one end, there's a garbage receptacle. The rest of the trail, probably a good two kilometers long, probably. There's nothing else there. So I would go on the side, the side that I, I do pick up a little bit as I, as I go along, but I don't have a big enough garbage can to take with me to pick it all up, right? So, but there is a point. They need, they need more garbage receptacles on, on trails, for sure.
Absolutely. Thank Counselor Cushing. Yeah, and I know I've been on some trails, not, not, not necessarily in the municipality, but outside the municipality. And, and the garbage issue is a big issue, for sure. Thank you. Counsel Hurlbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we all know that I like talking about garbage. And I had a conversation last night with someone that, the core group of volunteers that pick up garbage on our shorelines and in town have just surpassed 40,000 pounds for, of garbage for 2022. And that's more than pretty much any, any county in Nova Scotia. And I don't think that's because we have more garbage. I think that's because we have good volunteers that are, are doing that work pretty much every weekend in their spare time. A lot of shoreline garbage. And I know it's harder to do roadside now because of the long grass, but we have some events planned again for the spring to kind of move that forward. And to comment on Counselor Cushing's, you know, questions around recycling of rope, I've heard that, and I can't remember which organization Sonia Smith is with.
Clean.
Clean. They've got grant money, and they are taking all the rope from our, our, our waste recyclers. So in recycling it in some which way. So there's good things happening. And just through you to the C E O, what is the motion we have in the books about reverse onus? Do we move to?
I'm sorry.
What is the question, or what is the motion we have on the books around the reverse onus bylaw? Did we move to enact that? I can't, I thought it was this meeting that we were going to do that, but maybe it was last meeting when we already did it.
No, I think, I think the instruction is, it's there in the bylaws, so enforce it. Yep. Yep. So I don't, there's no regulatory work to be done. All the elements that you need are there. So Gus and I have already started talking about it.
Okay. And we'll get a report on whatever's decided?
Yep. What happened, I'll just very, very quickly tell you that Gus and our bylaw enforcement officer, Mr. Nickerson, they've met with the team in Shelburne, because Shelburne is looked at as having good success. So they've met with them to talk about the logistics and exactly how are they doing it? What are the keys to success? And there are some things that we have to make ready in order to kind of push the green light and announce that we're going to do it. So Gus and I are working on that.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions from council? Okay. We'll move on to 9.2, Regional Planning Project. Now I'll look to our C E O, Victoria Brooks, for, for some additional, for, to highlight some of the activities going on here. And there's lots.
It's, yeah, there, there's just a lot to bring before council and do reminders on. So an initiative that we are involved in, and we've been involved in, in a couple, for a couple of years, is under the Municipal Innovation Program with the province. And the municipality of Yarmouth is working with eight of the other 10 municipalities in the tri-counties to take a look at an innovative approach which helps solve some of the pains that we see in the planning and development and inspection side of the things that we do. And so the document that I filed with you is one you've seen before, but I just wanted to bring it back to the top. We're working on intent number one right now, which is to establish the parameters for the creation of a tri-county regional planning initiative. And so we're working with Group ATN, which is Ron Lesbrance and Thomas McGuire. You're familiar with those names. They were the successful proponents in the project. And so they've done a lot of the research. They've done a lot of the case studies. They've engaged with all 11 C E Os in the tri-counties to talk about planning and, and kind of get feedback on, you know, what would solve the pains in the tri-county area. And if you recall, we're taking, it's not just an organization where we're pooling human resources. We're looking to see if we can leverage the work to do innovative and creative things from an economic development perspective using planning, from a water protection perspective with respect to access to reliable drinking water from a planning perspective. So there's a lot we're trying to do through this initiative. And so outcome one, it, the pages aren't numbered in this document, so I'm sorry about that. But there's detail in outcome number one about a third of the way through the entire document. And it gives the specific activities that are required in outcome number one. And in that group of activities, there is going to be a time when the consultants are going to engage with each of the eight councils that are a party to the work. And that request is going to be coming before you in the next month, month and a half, two months. And so if you could make sure you're familiar with this document, there'll be a primer that I will circulate to you in advance that will kind of, in relation to the overall goal we want to achieve, kind of the context with respect to governance, funding models, intermunicipal agreements, and all those sorts of things that the consultants are going to want to pick your brain about. So this is just a heads up and a refresher that this work has been happening in the background, and we're getting to a pretty important stage gate where we're going to want to run some ideas and some possible approaches to the work by the councils.
Okay, thank you for that update. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, C E O Brooks. I noticed that this was initiated in 2019, and now we're in now 2022. Sorry. And I'm looking at the actual workplace and timeline. Are we way behind with this? And, and how, what, why?
So a lot of it had to do with the length of time it took to get our award from the province through the fund that we applied to. So we applied to the, we applied to the municipal innovation program. And I would have to go back and check my notes, Counselor Durkey. But I think we were nine months getting our answer on whether or not we qualified or were approved. Then there were, the municipality of Aragile was the lead municipality logistically on this. And as you know, Alain has been ill. And in addition to that, we've, we had some issues around the pandemic in terms of getting the work kickstarted with consultants and getting meetings on the books. So it's been a combination of things, but we were late even out of the gate based on the proposal because of the award of the funding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay, there being no further discussion on that item. We'll move on to 9.3, Property Cap Assessment Program. Continuing conversation, and there's a letter on file from Yarmouth County Community Health Board. So any comments on that? Yes, Ms. Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am on. I, with regards to the property cap, the NSFM, that was the top priority for NSFM for many, many years. And you can see where we have, where N S, NSFM has gotten on it. Nowhere. They made a lot of progress. They came up with an exceptionally great plan. And they had an all-party committee. And the all-party committee in the end didn't agree to it. So at this point, I'd like to make, and then we received one letter from one board saying that we should, you know, write the letter to discourage NSFM from, from moving forward. But there really hasn't been anything going on with, correct me if I'm wrong, C E O Brooks, but it's, it's basically been tabled. So I think my recommendation on this is that we not move forward. I believe there was a motion on the books. So I'd like to have that tabled until after the NSFM conference in the fall to see if there is really anything happening on it. Because as of now, there is nothing. So I'm not sure why, or if it would be necessary for us to, to write anything or do with anything at this point.
So we've got a, a motion to table? Do we have a?
So I can read, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, I can read what the motion was from the council meeting June 22. It was moved by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing, to place the letter from the Yarmouth County Community Health Board regarding support of NSFM's decision on removing cap for discussion at the July 21 Committee, the whole agenda. So if we continue to table it until you have further, more accurate information, I don't think we would be doing anything outside of what you, you asked for last month.
Right. Because I, I believe there was discussion, it was recommended that we write a letter to NSFM saying that we are not in favor of having the cap removed. I believe that was the original intent. But until anything's, my recommendation is now is that we table any discussion on that until there's further information that comes from NSFM.
So Counselor Durkey, just, just, if, if, if you would, if, if you would make a motion, I think it might be, be wise to make a motion to, to just?
Motion to table discussion on this until we hear anything from NSFM, which my recommendation was till after the conference.
Right. So what, what I'm doing is I'm, I'm, I just, for clarity's sake, perhaps we could just put it on the agenda after the conference and then that, to bring it back. That just makes it clear.
Exactly.
For staff, I think.
Yes.
Yep. Is that all right?
Yes, that's correct. That's exactly.
And do we have a seconder? And do we have a seconder? Yeah, we've got a seconder in Counselor Hilton. Any additional conversation? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item nine point four, Veterans Memorial Banner, uh, Program. And I'll look to our CAO for some conversation. I think there's a draft policy.
Um, so a briefing note was provided. So the direction was for staff to take a look at the economics of a, of a program. And so, uh, the briefing note is filed with you, but I'll very quickly summarize a kind of the process that we used. So we took a look at, um, because a rural municipality has different program implementation dynamics than, you know, perhaps a town would have where you have geographic, uh, situations that are different, we took a look at, you know, what was in the marketplace for products that could provide, um, a veterans' recognition program. And, uh, what you'll read is, is that, you know, there really isn't anything that's as good, um, in terms of, um, a, a placemaking type of a product where we could do a veterans' recognition program. Nothing really that's any better, um, than a bracket and a banner on a, on a utility pole. In fact, there's very little at all available in the marketplace. Um, so then we, we took a look at, okay, so if that's, if that's kind of the product that's available, um, how would we go about doing this in the municipality, recognizing the broad geographic nature of, of the community whole, um, but the micro-communities, um, uh, that make up the municipality, the District of Yarmouth. And then we also took a look at the, um, financial implications. So in the briefing note that's before you, essentially what's recommended is, is that we take a look at, um, our land use planning framework, where we have hamlets identified and where we know there's going to be a recommendation coming forward for a new hamlet in South Ohio. Um, we leverage that, um, in terms of, uh, predefined communities where there's, you know, a type of density, and, and suggest, you know, that, uh, we identify thirty utility poles in each one of the four hamlets, I'm gonna say, which is Port Maitland, Arcadia, South Ohio, and Carlton, and that we make thirty poles available, uh, for sponsored banners every year. But because this is an unplanned activity, if you want to do it this year, we need to find a way to implement it that is manageable. And so the recommendation is, is that, uh, we roll in, uh, ten poles a year over three years, um, at a cost of ten thousand dollars, just over ten thousand dollars this year, and then additional costs, um, in each year following that. There's a budget that's proposed. There's some revenue for families to sponsor, um, each, each banner, um, and to move forward that way. If, if there's a desire to move forward, I am recommending, because it's an unplanned program, rather than take monies from your grant contingency, um, that really is intended for you to help other community groups, that we take it from the twenty-five thousand dollar overall contingency we have set aside, um, and that this be one of your murky placemaking projects under the grants policy.
Good. Thank you. Um, Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, CAO Brooks. As you know, I, uh, have been very supportive of this program, uh, from the beginning. And so I would like to, uh, make a motion that we recommend to council to implement the program as, as, as recommended in our briefing note.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Durkey. Seconder, we've got a seconder in Counselor Allen. All those in, any additional conversation? Miss Jump, jump in the gun. I think most people are, uh-
Question.
Pretty positive. Question call for all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, council. I think this will be a great program.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, NSFM, uh, nine point five, sorry, uh, NSFM Membership Survey Response, and, um, looking to, uh, to Victoria to talk a little bit about this, uh, item for us.
Sure. So the process that council asked me to undertake in supporting you in your response to the NSFM on the survey call was to, um, have a chat with our own leadership and to have a chat with some of my colleagues in the region, to make sure we capture the main ideas around the renegotiation with the province and some of the specific issues that, um, you were asked questions about in the survey. So in the document that I filed with you, I highlighted in yellow what basically is the culmination of all those types of conversations, capturing what I hope is all the, the most important ideas that I think I heard you say you want to put forward to council. In our conversations at the low, at the leadership level here and with my colleagues, it appears that, um, there are no main ideas or themes missing. But before I submit, I obviously want your approval and just to make sure one more time, we're not missing any major themes or ideas.
Okay. So we're looking for any comments about, with regard to sort of main ideas, big pieces? Okay. And, uh, Madam CAO, we're, we're looking for a motion for you to submit.
Yes, please.
Okay. Counselor Herbert?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We've got a mover in Counselor Herbert, uh, a seconder, and Counselor Allen. Any additional comments? Uh, Counselor Durkey, you've got your mic on. Do you want?
No, sorry.
Nope, no worries. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thank you to CAO Brooks for capturing what I think is everything that we've talked about. Um, and thank you for reaching out to your counterparts. Um, yeah, I'm fully in support of all of the things, you know. Um, we, we struggle on a regular basis to ensure that what we're doing is, you know, what we're supposed to be doing and following our strategic plan. And I think, you know, there are some key things in here that, you know, the Minnesota, NSFM needs to know about, and, you know, our provincial government needs to know about. So I think it's been fairly succinct in capturing our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, council. So we had a recess, uh, planned on item ten, but we're, we're ahead of the game, which is good news. And so, uh, if it's all right by everybody else, we'll, we'll keep going. I think that's, that's obviously the thing we should be doing. So new business, uh, item eleven. Um, and the first item is, uh, period poverty, and, and I brought this to the table, uh, and just waiting for the document to load. In any event, it, it's not, but, uh, anyway, um, while I was at, uh, FCM, uh, just a little while back, um, in Regina, uh, they, they did talk about this issue, and really, uh, what it's about is, is, uh, you know, feminine hygiene products aren't available at, at lots of venues, um, including municipal venues, federal provincial issue, uh, venues. And lots of times, people don't end up, uh, women don't end up, uh, showing up at events because they just simply don't have the money to, uh, to, to have the, the products, or they forget the products, or whatever may be the case. So in any event, one of the resolutions was to ask the federal government to act on this and provide some funding. But I thought to myself, what a, what a great idea, because we can do something about it right now. So I guess my, my thought is, is that we should probably task our CAO and staff, uh, with looking at a, a policy, uh, to bring forward at a subsequent, uh, um, municipal council meeting, um, to address this issue. Like, we've got, we've got our, all of our facilities, we've got our recreation facilities. I mean, it, it, it's, it's really, um, it, it's really an access issue. Um, you know, we're, we're talking about accessibility, and this is, this is, I think, really a barrier for, for, for some folks to access boarding and other opportunities, right? So, uh, anyway, those would be my thoughts. If somebody wants to put a motion to that, that would be great. Or if somebody wants to talk about it more, that would be great as well.
Pardon me? Oh, no, no, I, I mean, I could make the motion, but if somebody else want, uh, Counselor Durkey?
Uh, so just for clarification, uh, Deputy Warden, we're looking at providing, um, products free to the public?
Yes.
Because I believe most of our facilities would have products available, but they are not free at this time. Am I correct in that? Do, do we know that?
I, I don't know for sure. I think some facilities have some dispensaries in them, but maybe not all. And I would have, I'm confident in saying a lot of our program administration doesn't make a provision for that for participants either.
Okay. Then, um, I'd be happy to make that, uh, a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Durkey. Do we have a seconder?
And that's to recommend to regular council?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Okay, we've got a mo, a seconder in Counselor Herbert. Any other dis, discussion, conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? All those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, council. Uh, eleven point two, Hillside Drive. And, uh, I put this on the agenda. There have been some, uh, there's some concern about, uh, Hillside Drive, and it's actually the, the, uh, road that goes up to Baptist Church here in Hebron. So, uh, perhaps, uh, Madam CAO, if you could make some comment about that. It, it is in bad, a bad state of repair, for sure.
Yep. So Hillside Drive is one of those, I'm gonna call it J-class. I don't know if it's JKLMNOP. I have no idea what letter goes with it, but it's part of our cost-sharing agreement with the province of Nova Scotia. So if there is an appetite on the part of council, um, to do something about Hillside Drive, it, it would get done through an annual cost-sharing program. And Counselor Herbert and Counselor Hilton, I'm not sure if you've been around for one of those processes because of the pandemic. So there is a program, usually it's available every year, hasn't been available during the pandemic, whereby the province reaches out to municipalities that have J-class road programs, and they say, look, there's a pot of money. Um, if you're interested in improving or upgrading a road inside that agreement, we, we can look at doing a fifty-fifty cost-sharing deal with you. So we've improved Goodwin Drive, Lila Kill, um, Kenny Hill, uh, Kenny Hill. Kenny, is Kenny Hill the one out in your district, Counselor Allen? We didn't end up, no. It was a safety issue, so the province paid for that one. Anyway, long story short, every year I get a package from the province, and literally the day after count, that the deputy warden asked for this to be on our agenda, I got my package from the province. So, um, what I've asked, um, the municipal engineer to do is to go, uh, do site inspections on the roads that are inside that cost-sharing agreement, and a recommendation will be coming forward to council on if we should nominate roads inside that cost-sharing program, and if there are roads, which ones, and, and to provide a priority ranking. So, you know, based on our asset management principles, if Hillside rises to the top, it rises to the top. And what would happen is, we, council, if they wanted to submit those roads, it would go into the province by late this fall. They would take a peek at it. We would get notification in January about whether or not they'd like to do projects with us, and it would inform our capital budget next year.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, oh, sorry. Guess we won't move on. Counselor Allen?
No, no, trying to delay. Um, how many, how many of those roads do we, do we have? Okay. I'm gonna put you on the spot, Madam CAO, but I'm just wondering how many of those roads we actually had.
It's, um, I thought I heard Counselor Cushing say not enough. Huh, I must be dreaming.
Not enough paved well.
I must, I must be dreaming. Um, I'm gonna try, I, I do have that list, Counselor Allen. It might take me a minute to pull it up. Um, but before we're done, I will get you that list. Um, it's not a lot in terms of kilometers, but it's a lot of small sections, like point two kilometers, half a kilometer.
Yeah. Cause I, I know, I know we have one in my area that's in desperate need of, of, uh-
Path Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear about that. I hear about Path, yeah.
And, um, yeah. Anyways, no, I was just curious as to how many of those we had. I'm wondering how long will it take for the, for our engineer to go out and actually have a look around and, and come back to us with, with?
The site inspections are done, and I told him that I wanted the material in order to present to council in August.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
So do you still want me, uh, Counselor Allen, do you still want me to look it up right now, or are you good?
Um, would you, I would like to know the number.
Yep.
Could you email it to us, maybe?
Counselor Hilton?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, this started, um, why we're picking garbage out of ditches about Hillside Drive, that's how this came up. And, uh, one of the residents had asked about it in, in the Path Road as well. They dug that up this winter, and I, I too would like to see the list of actual roads. I don't need it today, but I was wondering if maybe you could forward that out to us to see, um, how many fall actually within our, our own districts? Would that be possible?
I, um, yeah, I wouldn't have it by district. I'd just have it by list, but yeah, yep, for sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. Any additional comment on that? Okay. And, and so while you're looking that up, we'll, we'll move on with the agenda, and, and our CAO can just tap down a shoulder.
I'll circulate it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, next items, eleven point three, Heritage Advisory Committee Terms of Reference.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the initiatives council was looking at doing under your governance pillar in your strategic plan is to try and create some terms of reference for your standing committees. So our municipal clerk has been working on that project, and I have, um, for your review and consideration today, uh, draft terms of reference for the Heritage Advisory Committee. A lot of the work of the Heritage Advisory Committee is informed, um, by the Municipal Government Act. And you'll see in the draft terms of reference, there's ref, there's reference to the Heritage Property Act, there's reference to our bylaw. Um, and the membership is, is taken from what our practice has been. It's, it's nothing, it's not new. It, it's taken from how we've been, um, how we've been administering the committee. Um, we, we do have some, uh, language in there around qualifications which, uh, aligns with our citizen reps policy in terms of being, you know, um, a Modi citizen. We're looking for independent, uh, representatives, um, who do not represent specific heritage communities. Um, and so what we mean by that is, we aren't necessarily looking for somebody from the Nova Scotia Heritage Trust to sit on our Heritage Advisory Committee. We're looking for citizens from our community who are approaching the work, um, as a community stakeholder. Um, we are, you know, trying to populate committees with people who have, um, some skills, expertise, or lived experience that can help inform the work of the committee and, and add, add to the work that the committee's doing. So we do, you know, talk a little bit about expertise, um, and, and we talk about dedication and commitment. It's important to get quorums when meetings are called so that the work of the committee can advance. And then there's just a section on rules and responsibilities, which, um, are, are standard rules and responsibilities, um, that come from, uh, we have a terms of reference, for example, approved for our accessibility advisory committee, and we have approved terms of reference for our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. So we're just trying to mirror, um, those standards that you've set in those, those two previous examples. We talk about rules and responsibilities for staff. It's important for committee members to understand that. And there's a bit of a chat in there about meetings, and of course, we always bring to mind conflict of interest, and we are calling for a review of the terms of reference. So that's before you for your consideration.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, CAO Brooks. I'll make that motion that we, uh, recommend to regular council, that we approve the municipality of the District of Yarmouth Heritage Advisory Committee Terms of Reference.
Okay, we've got a mover. We have a seconder in Counselor Allen. Any other conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, council. Um, the next item, eleven point four, has been tabled to August. Eleven point five, Blue Route, Highway One, Hebron-Dayton. And, um, I put this on the agenda, just wanted to, it, it looks good. The, the project's going along well. Uh, but I did just want to, um, maybe have our CAO, uh, you know, over time, not anything immediately, no letter writing or any of that, look, look into what's, what's happening with the Blue Route. Like, will, will the province be putting the bike lane on the other side of the road? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it's on one side of the road. It's gonna look kind of strange. It's not on the other. So we, we, we've got a lot of this going on, but, uh, I, I just wanted to talk about it with council to, to put it in their mind. I mean, there's, there's, uh, you know, we've got a project potentially out in Arcadia. Um, you know, you'd have the sidewalk and bike lane on one side, not certain. So, so this is a timing issue essentially. I mean, o- obviously, if you're gonna have a Blue Route, you, you want on both sides of the road. So, um, but in any event, that's something to, to, to look at perhaps moving forward. Any additional comments, uh, CAO Brooks?
Uh, other than to remind council that our most recent active transportation project is along the Blue Route. And so in order to get our approval from the province, we had to build to accommodate the Blue Route, which- had to build to accommodate the Blue Route, which was an incremental additional cost of just north of $100,000. So we do have correspondence outstanding with the province asking if they're going to pay us for building their Blue Route.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Counselor Hilton, I missed-
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a question through you to the CAO about, you mentioned the one in Arcadia, the airport stretch. We, I think we kind of left, the last conversation about the airport stretch is that we were going to follow up with our partners to see, because it's still a possible build for the province next year, I believe, and we want to make sure that we've tackled them about the exact same thing.
I have a meeting with the regional manager and the area manager next week, and that is on the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
11.6 Community Science Policy Procedure C-03809, and there's a recommendation to repeal, and I believe the reason for repeal is, is that the place, we've got a placemaking policy in place, and really this makes this, it duplicates the function, so.
Yes, we've got, Counselor Durkey.
I'm pressing that button today. I completely understand that would be redundant to have this as we are working on our placemaking policy. So I will make a, a motion that we recommend to council that we, we repeal the Community Science Policy and Procedure C-03809.
Okay, we've got a mover, do we have a seconder? Counselor Hilton? Any addition, any additional conversation or comments? Yes, CAO Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just as a reminder, we are required to provide seven days' notice on policy motions, so this can't be dealt with this afternoon, it will be on your August agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you, counsel. And that brings us to the end of the committee, the whole agenda. I'll move, move that we recess, oh, sorry, my apologies.
I was just going to make a motion to the chair.
Okay, very good. Second? You guys are easy to get along with. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you.